I move we return to open session.
Second.
Gretkin.
Aye.
Moore.
Aye.
Shaner.
Aye.
Scott.
Aye.
Waters.
Aye.
I move we adjourn the closed session.
Second.
Moore.
Aye.
Shaner.
Aye.
Scott.
Aye.
Waters.
Aye.
Gretkin.
Aye.
Call the roll please.
Shaner. Here. Scott.
Here.
Waters.
Here.
Gretkin.
Here.
Moore.
Here.
Can you stand for a moment of silence? Prayer followed by the pledge.
By the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
How are we doing the interview?
Right away here?
Yeah, is Bradley here?
He's on. He should be any minute.
Okay.
I think so. Bradley, can you hear us? Oh, that's okay. Thank you. Says he's in. Yeah, he's in and not muted. How about this mute all?
Bradley, are you there? Alrighty. Message him and see if he can.
Why don't you work on that while I read a proclamation?
That's a great idea.
Okay, thank you very much. Whereas, brain injury is a serious public health epidemic affecting at least thirteen point five million Americans. And whereas an estimated two point five million children and adults in the U.S. sustain a traumatic brain injury, and another three point five million individuals sustain an acquired brain injury from non-traumatic causes each year, and currently more than six million children and adults in the U.S. live with lifelong disability as a result of traumatic brain injury. Many of our soldiers have reported symptoms related to concussion and brain injury, including slowed thinking, memory loss, sleep disturbance, attention and concentration deficits, and brain injury which is leading cause of disability among soldiers returning to their communities. Whereas a concussion is also a serious brain injury that can occur without loss of consciousness and can occur in any sport. And recognition and proper management of concussions when they first occur can help prevent further injury or even death, and as many as three point eight million sports and recreational-related concussions occur in the United States each year. Now therefore, I Robert E. Scott, Mayor of the City of Sioux City, Iowa, behalf of the City Council to hereby proclaim March twenty twenty-one as National Brain Injury Awareness Month in Sioux City, and encourage all our citizens to help enhance public awareness of traumatic brain injuries and salute the mission of the Brain Injury Association of Iowa. What do we got?
Looks like he dialed in now. Bradley, can you hear us there? You're muted. I can't message him because he's on a phone.
Okay, we're gonna.
Yep, move on and we'll get him.
We're going on. Consent agenda items three through twelve B, they can constitute a consent agenda. Items pass unanimously unless a separate roll call vote is requested by a council member. Any person wishing to speak on an agenda item may come up to the podium at the time the item is being discussed. Any person wishing to speak on an item not on the agenda may do so at the end of the regular citizens or meeting during citizen concerns. All speakers shall state their name and address for the record and then provide a statement, realizing your remarks will be limited to three minutes. I'll move the consent agenda.
Second.
Three is a reading of the council, city council minutes of March first and third. Four is a resolution temporarily closing a portion of Larson Park Road on March thirteenth for the St. Patrick's Day run and festival. Five is a resolution amending the position classification manual by approving an updated job description for the crime analyst technician in the police department. Six is a resolution fixing an assessed amount against private properties for the weed abatement program. Seven is a resolution authorizing the police department to apply for a grant for funding for the tri-state drug task force. Eight are actions relating to agreements and contracts. A is a resolution approving a change order number one to the service provider agreement with Bert Gurney and Associates for the repairs at the wastewater treatment plant. B is a resolution approving an amendment to number one to the consulting services agreement with Vingster and Ken for the bridge repair project. C is a resolution awarding a service provider agreement to MLS landscape and design for the Tyson Event Center landscaping project. Purchasing, number nine. A is a resolution awarding a purchase order to Ed Stevers Ford for the, for an F seven fifty crew cab vehicle. B is a resolution awarding a purchase order to Thompson Electric for security camera equipment at the convention center. I need to abstain on that item. C is a resolution awarding a service provider agreement to Thompson Electric for installation of security cameras at the convention center. I need to abstain on that item. Ten are applications for cigarette, tobacco, nicotine vapor permits. See the list come forward if you have questions. Eleven are applications for beer liquor license. See the list come forward if you have questions. Twelve are receipt amendments. See the list come forward if you have any questions. Anyone to be heard on any of those items, please come forward. Seeing none, call the roll or how we vote.
You may use your electronic voting panels.
Passes five zero. Recommendations of planning and zoning. Thirteen is a resolution approving the final plat of Rainbow Edition. Petitioner Steve Holmes, P&amp;Z recommends approval of the item. I'll move it.
Second.
Passes five zero. Fourteen is a hearing ordinance vacating a portion of South Lafayette Street. P&amp;Z recommends approval. Motion requested to defer this item till March twenty-second. I'll move that.
Second.
Passes five zero. Fifteen is a hearing and resolution approving the lease of Dinner Street Park to West Side Little League. Deferred from February twenty-second, March first. Most request to delete this item. I'll move that.
Second.
Are they not interested, Matt?
Matt Salvatore, Parks and Recreation Director. They have to get their insurance through the National Little League Organization and they're just having trouble securing that. So we're just going to delete the item at this time and bring it back once that insurance is secured.
Okay, thank you. Passes five zero. Sixteen is a hearing and resolution assessing a fifteen hundred dollar civil penalty or thirty day suspension against V one E sig and vape lounge for violation of cigarette laws. I'll move that.
Second.
The public hearing is now open. Would anyone want to be heard on this item? Seeing none, the hearing is closed. Passes five zero. Seventeen, resolution amending resolution number two thousand seventeen dash zero zero three two by authorizing a ninety day delay in demolition property at twenty-five twenty-one South Cecilia Street. I'll move that.
Second.
Code enforcement manager, we have had this one on the books for quite a while. The structure was very sound. We finally got an owner for this, new owner for this property. He has submitted the ten thousand dollar bond requirement as well as the list of repairs and the financial means letter. So staff would recommend ninety day stay on this property.
Thanks, Daryl.
Totally. Thank you.
Appreciate it. And thanks for what you did at the home show. Appreciate having you there, representing the city.
Eighteen is a resolution approving a third amendment to the Velma Agreement, a first amendment to the Minimum Assessment Agreement and a substitute promissory note with the Warrior Hotel Limited Partnership deferred from March first two thousand twenty-one. I'd move to defer till three fifteen twenty-one.
Second.
Anyone want to be heard on it?
John, I, yeah. I saw you there. We're going to defer this for one week, but if you'd like to speak on it today, you don't have to come back.
I'll be here next week.
Okay, I just wanted to give you the opportunity if you wanted.
I'll look at the agenda specifically.
Yep, and it doesn't, when we've decided or the mayor had decided to defer it, that doesn't necessarily get posted the same time. If we don't get the correct information or information requested, then we decided to defer.
Well, do come up and speak on it.
Exactly, you look good.
Do come up and speak on it then.
Come here anytime, John. Is that next Monday? Fifteenth. I'm sorry, March fifteenth, John. I'm sorry, I have my dates wrong. Defer till March fifteenth.
Next Monday.
Yeah.
Is that correct?
Sorry about that. I thought you said fifteenth.
Yes, I can tell you that right now. I don't know. One week until the fifteenth, yeah. It may get deferred again, but if we don't get what we need, but at least.
Or you use your voting panels.
Passes five zero to one, Mr. Moore abstains. Nineteen is resolution inviting proposals for the lease of space in the Long Lines Family Recreation Center announcing the intent to accept the proposal of the Arena Sports Academy and scheduling a hearing. Somebody want to move that?
I'll move that.
For a second?
Second.
So tell me. It's, you read this and it's kind of confusing. I'm not an attorney like Mr. Moore, so I don't have that depth and grasp of what it really says. So are they only leasing it at night?
Matt Salvatore, Parks and Recreation Director. So today's council action would invite proposals and set the hearing for thirty days. The proposed hours for renting the facility would be five to nine on weekdays. Saturdays from eight AM to seven PM. Sundays, eight AM to three PM. Wednesday nights and Sunday nights would be reserved for Parks and Recreation programming. Okay, and we did an appraisal. It was ordered to determine the square footage price of two dollars and fifty cents plus half utilities. And in the past year, Long Lines has become underutilized due to the pandemic and because soccer, soccer is now transferred over to the Expo Center. We estimate about fifty percent of all of our rental revenue came from soccer at Long Lines. So this would be a way to make Long Lines viable again. It was already a very highly subsidized facility. It's also been brought to my attention that the Sioux Land Pickleball Club is here today to oppose this process. Just a reminder, the city's done lots to support Pickleball Club over the last few years. We renovated, renovated Long Lines Family Rec Center with pickleball in mind. We accommodated that activity. Last year, the council funded a hundred and twenty thousand dollar Riverside pickleball courts. And we have an agreement with them.
Keep in mind, you were going to spend that on tennis courts and converted that. Yeah, go ahead.
The park. Forwarded. The park.
Well, not that year, but we certainly had to spend it. They were in such terrible shape that we had to spend that money.
The park board actually voted to abandon the tennis court since they were underutilized. So we, we weren't planning on.
Doing anything.
Well, you had to do something with them. You couldn't just leave them in that disarray.
We were going to close them. But that.
Yeah.
When you close an amenity, you never open again, folks. I hate to tell you that.
And that's why this worked out great. And then we also have an agreement with the Pickleball Club where they are using Long Lines Family Rec Center in the mornings, Monday through Friday, at no charge. They keep all membership fees. They keep in all, all drop-in fees to be reinvested back into pickleball. And I think they have some plans for what they want to invest in, so I'd be happy to answer any more questions.
What's that schedule you just announced?
Five to nine on weekdays.
No, no, I mean for pickleball, for the.
Oh, eight thirty to noon is the official agreement, Monday through Friday.
So it, it's possible when we get to this proposal in thirty days, it's possible, I mean, they could coexist?
Oh, they, yeah.
It's not.
It would, it would function very much the same as it's functioning now.
Not either or.
It's not.
Correct, they've been working with them.
We're not trying to take away the morning pickleball opportunities.
And Matt, just thinking, so for those hours, did you break it down? Per hour, what we would charge for the use of that facility during those hours? Is that kind of how you did that?
I mean, if you just did the math, it's roughly two hundred dollars a day.
Because I was trying to figure it out. If it's, if they're renting it for two hundred dollars a day from five to nine, and then, because then when is pickleball using it?
Eight thirty to noon, Monday through Friday.
Eight thirty to noon, Monday through Friday. And they're not paying that rent though, right, right now?
Correct.
That was the only question I had.
And Matt, the, the information Mr. Brenzel sent us last week, or the mayor that you forwarded on to us. We talked to, he talked about Wednesday volleyball, I believe, and Saturday, or Sunday, women's, adult women's and men's basketball.
Mm-hmm.
The time hours that are listed are, are the hours of that the arena would have the lease agreement if it goes through in Exhibit B. Doesn't that allow for all of those programs to continue?
Correct, yep. Wednesday nights and Sunday nights are reverse, reserved for Parks and Recreation programming.
Okay, and, and that's, I guess that's my question. You said Parks and Rec programming, but I didn't know if that was the programming you were referring.
That's like our, our volleyball, bask, men's and women's basketball, those types of programs.
Okay. Are there others that they have to compete with, that the Pickleball Association would have to compete with for those time frames?
Off the top of my head, there probably are some others. I'm just, we have some youth events as well.
All right.
Yes, there is some.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
On Saturdays.
Eight.
Eight to seven, yeah. Yeah, because I was, I had called you about it, but Pete, I was asked about the volleyball as well, but I got that clarification that that was worth, because I was stopped at the home show and they also said that that was something that they really appreciated and have been doing. So they appreciated that there would be the open time as well, or that it would continue to work under this lease.
Yeah, if we didn't, if we didn't structure the lease that way, then we wouldn't have a home for those activities. So we made sure that that was built in.
Dustin Cooper, Executive Director of the Arena Sports Academy. Just very briefly, I don't want to take a whole lot of your time. First off, we appreciate you hearing us. Very simply, we want Pickleball Association to grow. We want to help the city Parks and Rec volleyball and basketball program. We have done that to, I feel, the best of our ability, and I think that the lease is structured to show and prove that, that we are staying off of those hours that currently exist. We're looking to essentially lease the facility on the hours that were not being used. Some of the events, I believe also, that we have in the last couple of months been able to bring to downtown Sioux City. There have been very positive economic impacts on the city of Sioux City, specifically downtown. I have a list of those events. If anybody would be interested in seeing those, we plan to continue to do that. But at the same time, we want to support the Pickleball Association, and I think that we've done a very good job of communicating to the best of our ability. I don't want this to turn into anything negative at all. We want this to be uplifting and a, and a positive situation. I think it's benefit, it's beneficial for the kids of the community. I think it's beneficial for the businesses, especially in downtown Sioux City. I think it's beneficial to the city because it gives some revenue in a, in a, in a building that's, quite frankly, a little bit rundown at this point. And we're willing to put a little bit of money into the building as well and help with the upkeep. We've already hired somebody full-time that would be solely responsible for the management of the area that we are responsible for. With that being said, I just wanted to see if there are any questions you had directly from myself.
Dustin, I appreciate you being here, and I've, I've called you a lot talking about this project, trying to understand the ins and the outs. I appreciate you taking those calls. I wanted to ask, if, say for instance, pickleball does continue to grow, it booms, and we're looking for an opportunity to possibly host a tournament or something. Is that something that you see the, the manager of that facility that you've already hired or yourself working with them to try to implement that or work towards that? Is that something you would be open to?
A hundred percent, and I will take it a step further. Within our building, our own building, the Arena Sports Academy, we have five pickleball courts. Now, we're busy all the time, but in the event that there was some overflow from Long Lines Pickleball Tournament that we could host at our facility, we would be open to that as well, just as on rare events where the Pickleball Association has been displaced, possibly on a Friday for some sort of an event that is happening. There's been a couple of times where we have opened up our own doors for the Pickleball Association at no charge to come and play pickleball in our facility. Again, because I want this to be a positive relationship, and I think we've done a very good job of proving that.
Have a couple of comments for you and maybe, maybe questions. And I agree with council member Waters. I appreciate your being here to have an open discussion about this. First of all, I want to say, I can't get away from looking at documents as an attorney. So I've made several comments on, on the proposal that was in our homework. Please don't take that personal. Don't take it any more than I'm asking questions of the city attorney.
I'm married to an attorney, so I'm, I'm good, yeah.
Does the legal work. And I just want to say, and, and my memory's not as good as it used to be, especially with the pandemic going on. But pre-pandemic, I remember discussions about building the Expo Center.
Yep.
And what's going to happen to Long Lines? And oh my gosh, we're going to be shifting everything from Long Lines to Expo and is Long Lines even going to, is even, will they even survive what's going on? So I think earlier in this process, you might have heard some discussion about, about process. And it was nothing about your proposal, it was nothing about what you've done in the city of Sioux City. You've done a lot of good things in Sioux City, and we want you to know we appreciate that. But we do have, we do have to answer to everyone.
Hundred percent.
Raises questions, just like I will on the lease. I'll raise a lot of questions about it. We do have our citizens that will raise questions. Please don't take those personal.
Absolutely not.
Yeah, we're just having an open discussion.
Yep.
Of how we can coexist, how we can make this work. Matt, you may have said this earlier, but I think if, if there's any, you know, if Long Lines ever gets to be where we want it to be as far as busyness and activity and, and tournaments and that kind of thing, the spillover would, wouldn't that, part of that answer be either your facility or the Expo Center?
The, the easy answer to that is, I'm sorry, I don't know if that was to matter to me, but I can answer that is yes. I think the vision here is a lot bigger than what some of us are seeing. I think the vision is we want to fill our own building, but we also want to fill the Expo, Long Lines, and any other building that we can possibly fill. Tyson Event Center. I'm a Sioux City person, born and raised, and I love the town. Moved away for fifteen years to Phoenix. I came back. It's a great place to raise a family. I'm very passionate about not only Sioux City, but Sioux City youth athletics and events. And we've made it known, you know, very passionately, and hopefully we've articulated ourself well, that for us, it's not, you know, just about us. It's about lifting up people around us as well, and that includes the Expo Center, that includes Long Lines, that includes Tyson Events. And we have some plans down the road to try to continue to, you know, help those facilities grow as well as help our own facility grow as well. Because at the end of the day, I understand that if the Expo succeeds, we succeed. If Long Lines succeed, we succeed. It's, it really is a team sport here. I've been a part of team sports my entire life. That's how it works. If your teammate's not, not helping the cause, the team suffers. I very much see Mr. Salvatore and, you know, Tim at, at, at the Tyson as team members. And I want to help fill buildings, and I want to help small businesses as well along the way. I have stories all the time, just today, stories from small business owners in the community, thank, asking us for our schedule because they don't have enough staff for, for their businesses. That's what gets me excited, not just the smiles of the kids coming into the place, participating in programs that have not been here since I was a kid. And we're able to provide those things, but also the small businesses that are seeing this very real, tangible, positive impact happening in our community. And that's what gets me excited. And, and once again, I hundred percent understand that you have to hear everybody and take the questions. I, I appreciate your position more than you probably know. And again, I just wanted to make it known that we want this to be super positive. I don't want any tension, I don't want any negativity. We want to move forward in the most progressive, positive, positive way that we possibly can.
Well, your, your passion for what you've just outlined shows to the community, and it shows to the mayor and to the council. I mean, I can say that on their behalf because it, it does. Pickleball, volleyball, all the other team sports, their passion is, is equivalent. And, and that's, and it is good, and you're right. It's, it's, it's a very positive thing we have. You know, the Sioux City Journal published an article in yesterday's paper, Sunday's paper, of all the positive things that have happened, and that's in a pandemic situation. And so it's good to have these things happen. Let me ask you this, and, and you don't know me well enough, but I, I can ask a question. And if you find it offensive, you just tell me that.
It's hard to offend.
Well, you, but you gotta, you gotta just be real direct with me.
Yep.
So I get the point. But let me ask you this, because some, some may think if the city should move forward and lease this. I'm saying if, because this is just setting the thirty day.
Yep.
Period to start running. If we enter into the lease, sometimes there's a perception, and I even hate to bring this up because I don't want to.
Yep.
I don't want to facilitate the perception, but there's a perception that now Mr. Cooper leases the Long Lines.
Yep.
And, and there are exceptions to a couple of rooms, the party room and.
Yep.
Something else. But you're leasing it, so it's like we've given up any kind of control over the facility. And so there's, that's worrisome to a lot of people, or to some people. And it may not be today, but, but I'm anticipating that that might be one of the, one of the items that might be brought up. I read the lease, the proposed, the proposed lease, and it has a sixty day cancellation clause. Are you still finding that to be acceptable to have that either party can cancel the lease with a sixty day notice for no, no reason, no anything other than here's your sixty day notice? Or you on the other side, your city, is your sixty day notice? Do you still find that acceptable?
We do find that acceptable, yes.
Okay, because I think, and I'm not sure, I haven't talked to the city attorney as to why that provision was put in the lease, but the way I read it is it's to, we have a vision, you have a clear vision of what this is going to look like. Pickleball has a vision of what they want to see. All the other team sports have a vision, but if it doesn't work, unforeseen circumstances, anything could come up, and it works both ways. It could be on your side, it could be on the city's side.
Yep.
Pickleball.
I'm perfectly, perfectly aware of that.
And that's a way to address that concern.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
At least that's what I see.
And, and that's the way that we see it as well.
Okay.
I've been proven my whole life, I, we will prove that this was a good partnership, and it will be a positive, it will be a positive thing. I mean, I can't over-accentuate that, I mean, I don't sleep as it is, I won't sleep making sure that this thing goes, that it is a, it is a positive experience. I am aware of, of that clause, and I know what it means, yes, sir.
Okay, and I can't overemphasize either that by having discuss, and I appreciate your attitude, I really do.
Yep.
By having discussion, it's not a negative, it's a positive, and we, we can have a lot of positive that comes out of this. And like I said, I went through the lease thoroughly.
Yep.
And I think I raised a lot of good points that would be good for both sides, so.
Yep.
I just kind of wanted to set the stage there as far as where I'm coming from, because if Pickleball gets up here and they say, what we've talked about doesn't exist, it's not going to happen, we need, I want to listen to that.
Yep.
So.
As you should.
I just want to let you know, but I, but we do appreciate all you've done in the community.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
And continue to do, and, and I'm glad you came back, it's always nice to have people and.
Steal you back from Phoenix.
I'm not going anywhere now, I'll tell you that much.
Exactly. All right, thank you.
Thank you, guys, appreciate it.
Thanks, Mayor, for giving me the time to have some dialogue about that. Anyone else want to be heard?
My name is Frank Brienzio, B-R-I-E-N-Z-O, 6852 Cypress Point, 51106. I'm speaking on behalf of adults and seniors in this community who have concerns regarding this agreement between the city and the Arena Sports Academy regarding the control of the Long Lines Rec Center. Currently during the winter months, as you've heard, Parks and Rec sponsors several very successful adult programs at Long Lines, the volleyball leagues, the men's and women's basketball leagues on Wednesdays and Sunday nights, and I'm told that these are very popular, they sell out quickly, and because of the high demand, they've been expanded over the last few years. And since these programs are being held during that proposed arena rental time, it's our understanding, as Matt confirmed, that thankfully, they'll have an exception to this contract. But what if the demand continues to grow? Will it be possible to add programs or sessions on the evenings and weekends, or will the priority be given to the arena youth programs? There's another group of adult and senior community members who heavily utilize Long Lines, as you know, but that activity is not officially sponsored by Parks and Recs. And that, of course, is a pickleball play each weekday morning from eight to noon. Routinely, we have 12 to 15 adults tending, today it actually was 17 people there, they pay the $3 drop-in fee or $50 for the year. We believe participation will continue to grow, since we're getting new players ev, each and every week, and more players are coming out to play as the pandemic recedes. A group of volunteers from the Suland Pickleball Association does the setup, the shutdown, they collect the fees, and they get waivers signed each weekday. This year, the fees collected will help purchase wind screens for the Riverside pickleball courts. And even though the agreement gives the arena control of the facilities only weekdays from 5 to 9 and every weekend, you can expect that setup, tear-down, and cleanup will occur outside these hours. During the trial period, for example, pickleball was canceled by the arena seven days out of 23 in December, three days in January, and four days in February, including the Monday and the Friday around the President's Day weekend, when many adults were off work and wanted a place to play. We've sought to expand the use of the Long Lines to a few weekday evenings and sun, and Saturday mornings for our working adults, but our requests have been denied. Even with this lack of places to play, participation continues to grow. Our membership has gone from zero to 170 people in nine months. We have 35 corporate sponsors. Last Friday morning, there were 60 adults playing pickleball someplace in Suland. Currently, we conduct beginner introductory sections, sessions bi, bi-weekly from 7 to 9 in a very small gym at a local church. Because of the number of courts, the sessions are limited to 12 players, but they are always full. So in summary, if the hours stated in the agreements are strictly adhered to, the status quo can be maintained, but any accommodation for growth is off the table for adult and senior programs. Therefore, we believe granting control of a city-owned public facility to a private organization whose sole mission is youth programs inevitably will reduce availability for adults and seniors. So we're asking, please consider directing the staff to develop a way forward which provides not only for today's adult and senior demand, but for future growth. Thanks for listening.
Thanks for your comments, too, they're very good, and I, I hope we get, I hope we can have some response to the points that you raised.
Well, and Frank, I would have, I would just have a que, question, if, if you don't mind. I was just curious if your group had reached out, or, because obviously there's a relationship with Mr. Cooper, that you've worked with him in the past, at least using the arena facility, as well as using Long Lines and things like that.
Yeah, we, uh.
And having used it, so my question.
Before the pins, I'm a kid. Yes, I'm sorry.
Oh, that's fine. So my question, I guess, was just, when this proposal was put forward and you saw the hours and you had these concerns, did you reach out to Mr. Cooper to say, I really am concerned about this, is there a way we can work together in the future?
Now, we saw it Sunday in the newspaper.
Okay.
So, no, we haven't done that yet. But, but he's right, we have communicated clearly, you know, usually we get sufficient notice on those weekdays when we can't play because of his setup, or cleanup, or tear-down. We typically get enough notice to be able to try to get the word out to our members. Unfortunately, one, and this may have been a one-off deal, but on a Wednesday night at 4 o'clock, or at 7 o'clock, we were called to say that we can't play Thursday and Friday that week, so we had to scramble around and try to find how we could contact those 15 people that had signed up to play the next day. And he's right, that he offered his facility, but, you know, folks got in their cars, drove down to the, to the arena, and had to turn around and find this place in Morningside. So, it wasn't an ideal situation for the folks, but typically, we do get enough notice to be able to try to get it out to our, to our members and tell them, you're not going to be able to play this Friday or this Monday. But it happens, I, I told you the numbers that, that it's happened.
Well, and I didn't, I apologize, I thought you knew well before Sunday, because I thought that's when you emailed the mayor, and that's when I got that email, so I thought you knew about this agreement.
No, I knew, yeah, I didn't know it was on the agenda, unfortunately, until.
But you knew we were talking about it.
Yeah, right.
And then, so, but you wanted.
We've been in a trial period, we've been in a trial period since October, so, but I didn't know the terms and conditions specifically.
But during that whole trial period, did you talk with Mr. Cooper about?
No.
I just wish there was better communication, I guess, you know what I mean, is what I'm, I'm getting at, is I want, it sounds like Mr. Cooper really wants communication and cooperation, and I understand that those things happen as far as cancellation of those dates, that gets frustrating, but it sounds to me like, unless he's being disingenuous, it sounds, everything he was saying is, he would like to grow pickleball as well and work with you, and it sounds like he's opened his facility free of charge to let you play there when he's had to displace you, is that true?
Twice, twice out of those 18 days I, I talked about, that was the case.
Oh, okay.
We were able to utilize his facility, two, two days out of seven plus four plus three, 14, I guess, yeah, right.
Which I guess is two more than he needed to do, I guess, right?
Yeah, beggars can't be choosers, we'll take whatever we can get, but yeah.
For sure.
It was opened up to us those two days.
Because I would hope it would grow. I, I honestly love, I mean, Randy and I talked about this, how, how long ago, Randy, a long time ago, about pickleball and its potential and how it can continue to grow, and that was why Randy reached out to us, reached out to the council, and said, hey, this is the vision, this is what we want to do, which is why, to the mayor's point, when we were talking earlier, why we moved up all of that funding into that year to be able to do that Riverside Court project, I mean, that was 120 grand, wasn't going to get done otherwise, which I think all of us were really excited to do, and it's awesome that the group has continued to grow, I think that's exciting.
I just got a couple comments. I, Randy, I'm from 1602 Morningside Avenue, Sioux City. I wasn't going to say anything, but this is not all about the revenue. Dusty, I appreciate what, everything you've done. I've been in business, I'm all, hundred percent about business, but there is quality of life. There is quality of life here in Sioux City. There is quality of life in the adult and now older adult. As Frank had mentioned, I've done, uh, four sessions, 12 people, the last seven weeks. I got another full session this month, full session the following month. I, I got pipe balls today, it's coming out of the woodwork, here's my problem. We get down with all these, they're all fired up, well, where can I go to play? There's no place to play. These are now retired people, we're not talking about us, retired, Frank and I, we, we can play anytime we want to. We're working people. No problem, we can play anyplace. It's, it's our problem in the evenings and weekends, we have no place for people to play. You find us someplace to play, believe me, they can have a hole, everything down there for me. We can't find any place to play, we've gone, we've gone to colleges, we've gone to the water, we've gone to, you know, now, some of the pandemic has, as far as us not to play, at our, at our church where I give the, the lessons. We don't want to play two nights because we can't have 50 people on three courts. We just have no place to play. Uh, you know, and, and it's not only pickleball, but it's volleyball, it's, it's a golf sport, it's quality of life, you know, type of things, it's not all about the revenue, you know, it's all about the revenue, then you give it to, it, you know, the, the, we go buy what, you find us a place to play, it's a place to play.
Yeah.
What we call about that.
Well, and I think that's why.
We've gone to indoor tennis courts, we've gone to, we've gone to, we've gone to, I mean.
Yeah.
We just don't have a place to play, in, in the evenings and weekends.
I was going to say, that's why I thought that Parks and Recreation has really tried to work with you, is, because, so you could have a place to play, have, free of charge, you know what I mean, you're making money by playing in our facility.
I haven't talked about it yet.
No, 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 but I'm saying, at least then you have a place.
We're more than glad, you know, for what, what, you know, what we have.
Yeah.
And believe me, you know, Riverside, we're just, we're just, you know, everybody that's just, just ready to go out there.
Yeah.
As Frank had said, we've gone from 75 members when we had the dedication.
Yeah, yeah.
You taught me everything.
Well, 171.
You taught me everything I know about pickleball.
I was going to say, Dan was swinging the racket.
171, this is just over the winter, this is not even in the.
Yeah.
So you have a place to play 50% of the time, because you have morning space, right?
On where, morning space, we have, we have.
For, for the retired people.
Eight to noon.
Eight to noon, so 50% of the day for the people.
The mic's up, I don't think.
We have one side of the church.
But they're all in the daytime?
All in the morning, mornings and daytime.
Why do you think it is that they don't have any space in the evening?
Youth activities.
And do you offer?
They're all being taken by, 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 uh, youth activities.
Because they're being paid to do the youth activities in the evening.
Not necessarily, church opens, churches open up.
Not the churches, but the United Center and the academy.
For kids to practice so they can go play at the arena, or they can go play at.
Because the kids are in school during the daytime.
It's a school district, I mean, we're going to go to the schools and see what we can do, you know.
Yeah.
Sioux Falls, they have, that's what they do, they rent, they, they.
They rent the schools?
Park and Rec.
Do something.
They rent the school, they provide staff.
I'm on it.
I just played there.
Parks and Rec rents the school?
I played last Saturday, I have a Terry Redlin grade school.
Good night.
Oh.
Good night.
And it's all city sponsor.
In Watertown?
Sioux Falls.
Oh, I didn't know Terry Redlin was in Sioux Falls.
Wasn't.
That's the name, that's the name of the grade school.
Oh, okay.
And they, they provide two nights and, and the week, and weekends. So, you know, just have a sign, place to play, you know, and this, this, we, I mean, this isn't a big deal, we're not, we're, like I said, we're all.
Yeah, we don't want it to be pickleball against the academy, right.
I want to make sure, I want to.
The arena, the arena, I'm sorry.
I want to clarify Frank's points, if I may. I, I just want to clarify your points that you made earlier, Frank, Mr. Frank there?
Sorry.
What I heard you say is, if there, if the hours that are now proposed are strictly followed, that today anyway, you could coexist.
Correct.
But then there also needs to be a, so that means strict adherence to the hours, and then the other point I heard you raise is, there has to be some room for expansion and knowing what that looks like.
Correct.
Okay, tho, those are the two points I took out of your good comments, you made some really good comments, but those are the two that I pulled out, was there anything else that I might have missed?
Just that, you know, you can't, you can't look at just the five to nine, because there's setup and tear-down and leaving mats on the floor.
Okay, thank you.
And it's just, it's not going to be just weekdays.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure I had that.
Thank you.
Would it be okay if I make a brief comment?
Yeah.
Carolyn Elwanger, 3904 Kateri Court here in Sioux City. I've been the one who's had direct contact with Dustin when he's gotten ahold of us about an event coming up down at the Long Lines.
Good, okay.
And we greatly appreciate that, and he has given us sufficient notice, and we have been able, for the most part, to notify people ahead of time.
Oh, good.
I think our concern was, we just, as more youth activities come up, more things are going to be happening, they're going to need more time for setup, and we were just a little bit concerned that this might cut more into our daytime hours, that we do have a contract with the city on, so, we're not trying to take anything away, and we do appreciate, I do appreciate the relationship I have with Dusty, he's very good at contacting me directly, and we're able to get things done. We're not complaining about that at all, and I just wanted to make that clear. We just know that pickleball is going to start exploding here, there's a lot going on, Randy's trained a lot of new people, he's continuing to give lessons, and it's going to continue to grow, and once these courts open up in Riverside, you're going to see them used like nothing else. And we're probably going to be coming back to you at some point about adding some more outdoor courts somewhere in the city.
Riverfront, yeah, I was going to say, I, I know I've been talking, I've been talked to about it already, I understand.
Yeah, so, so maybe it'll hap, maybe it'll be that we can't add any more time down at, at Long Lines because of other things going on, and that's fine, but I guess we would like to partner with the city in some way so that we can expand elsewhere if need be, but we're certainly not wanting to take anything away from him, so I just wanted to make that clear, thank you.
I really appreciate those comments, because, yeah, it sounds like then at least you have had good communication and kind of an understanding.
Yes.
Because to Mr. Moore's point, I mean, we have to strike a balance, and that's where I really struggle, I mean, I consider Randy a friend, and I've gotten to know members of the pickleball group, you know, and we want to strike a balance, right? I want to be offering all the programming we can for pickleball, help that program, expand, and see what it can go on to do, because Randy pitched the vision to me in my office, I forget how long ago, you know, and now we're, we're seeing that come to fruition, but we have to balance that with, you know, youth activities as well, because at the end of the day, we want, we want everyone to continue to stay here, to play here, to be able to move here and live here, and so we have to be able to offer those things as well. I mean, I look at the impact that having the arena, I mean, look at just February 20th, that weekend alone, right?
I agree.
When we had all of those hotels sold out, when we were able to have all of those different youth sport, sports activities, that really grows and builds our economy. So we have to try to strike a balance, and that's where it's really, when we're offering those morning sessions, you know, I mean, and honestly, those morning sessions, because I, I think it's one of those things where it's, it's a win-win, you are getting a space to be able to play, but you're also capitalizing on revenue, that you're investing into your facility, or into your, um, what'd you say, the nets and stuff that you're going to be able to do and stuff?
Wind screens, yeah.
So you're able to invest that, which I think is exciting, too, but we have to be able to not have an increasing subsidy, so we saw an opportunity to partner with a group that really could use that in the evenings.
I get that.
To be able to balance that, so it is a real challenge, I mean, I, I see both sides, and that's why I was hoping that communication could continue, and I'm, I'm happy to hear that at least with you, it, it's been good, but just.
Yeah.
happy to hear that at least with you, it, it's been good, but just that open communication to see about, hey, we wanna have a big tournament, can you help us? You know, and if they have a dedicated person working at Long Lines that could partner with Frank or with Randy or someone like that, I mean, I think there could be a real opportunity there to grow and help with that programming. I mean, I would be hopeful at least.
Sure. I guess I'd just like to make one final comment and that is, you know, youth activities are great and the fact that they're growing is wonderful. I think that's great. But youth has the arena. They've got the United Sports Academy. They have Long Lines and they have the Expo Center. What do older adults have?
Well, it sounds like you've used, you've used all those facilities as well, right?
Uh, not the Expo Center.
Well, no, that's.
Oh, not the Expo yet.
And we've used the arena to a limited extent, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. But I know, we, I know we're gonna continue to grow and we're happy to partner with you in any way we can so that we can help this sport continue to grow along with others, so.
Great.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
One more quick thing I wanted to note, um, there has been opportu- there has been circumstances where they've had to be displaced, but that's not unique to when Parks and Rec was, was using the facility. We would have activities going on, a rental or, and we would have to give advanced notice when pickleball.
A third of the time, Matt, in a month is too much.
Well, like daddy, daughter, date night, we would cancel for.
You don't have an agreement with these guys. I'm sorry. I, I, listen, I love their facility. Too noisy for me most weekends, but, but I'm old, but I love what they're doing and all that. But you've gotta figure out a way where you cannot do seven days out of, that's a, that's a quarter of the month that you disrupt their activity. And, you know, we don't like to change things on this council agenda like today. I don't really like to do that, but it, because it disrupts people. And then they got a hundred and seventy-one people. I'm sure they've got an email list and all that, but somehow that has to be addressed for me. And listen, I'm gonna tell you all where I'm at. I'm probably gonna vote for this probably, if we can come to some sort of compromise. It's a process for me and the process. And Matt, he's heard it and Bob's heard it. These guys were already in the facility and the council didn't even know it. I find that totally unacceptable for a city facility that size that I have to hear from one of you guys that we've even rented it out. I don't find that acceptable. So the process for me today is to vote no. Even at the end of the day, I might vote for the lease. And you know, I'm not telling you and I haven't heard, but we oughta not do business that way. I shouldn't hear from the public that there's a lease out there. I shouldn't hear that that way. And I know the rest, I'm probably aren't bothered by that, but I am really bothered by that.
Well, I think we have to follow a process, Mayor.
Well, then why didn't we know the day that they started negotiating and, and that they were doing this month to month? Did you know it? Did it start in October? Cause I sure as heck didn't know until about, uh, four or five weeks ago. And that's not the way we oughta do business around here. So, I know I'm gonna irritate Matt and irritating Bob, but it's, it doesn't matter. To me, it's a process and we, we wouldn't do it anywhere else. So why'd we do it here? And that gave these guys, and I looked, and I like Dusty's, I guess we're supposed to call you Dustin now cause you're older, but I, I've known him as Dusty since he was a little guy. And he's doing a great job, but he's got a leg up on this deal now because we only went to one vendor.
No, anyone could make a proposal today, right?
Anyone could make a proposal.
Let me tell you what, I've been, I've done this job when you were in grade school. When it comes on that thirty day, I've never seen a council not take the proposal. Even when others have come in a bid.
So whose fault is that or what is that?
Whose fault is that?
I, I mean, I don't wanna blame Matt or Dustin for that.
Hey, from my perspective, it's better to utilize the facility with somebody using it rather than it set empty, so.
I don't disagree, but tell us what you're doing. Why didn't the?
I thought it was communicated, but I'm sorry if it wasn't.
Okay. And I thought I remembered it early on too, but maybe I'm wrong.
Well, it, I mean, it may have been one, one of those memos.
I was gonna say, I thought I remembered an email, but I could be wrong.
The process started back in July and August of last year when they were doing their summer tournaments and they didn't have an extra location. So that started this whole process as I laid out my memo. And it grew from there just cause they had a need and we had a need for the facility, facility to get utilized that was otherwise not going to be utilized.
It was underutilized.
And now it's busier than it's ever been. And the fact that we have youth activities where they're at in Sioux City right now, I think is a very positive thing. And if we want.
And they're gonna do that and make me like, that I've said something wrong. I complimented on everything they're doing. I agree with you one hundred percent. It has nothing to do with that, Matt. Come on.
Okay.
Let's be fair about it.
Well, no, I think he's just saying that we're utilizing. Cause what I worried.
I know exactly what he was.
Cause Matt, what I worried about was, we, I remember one of the big decisions we made on council, uh, since I was elected was to repurpose, or not repurpose, what did we do? We invested so much money into Long Lines. And I remember the impassioned plea of MVP volleyball. They came here saying how they gave all these people scholarships to be able to go to college and do all this. They were paying a large sum of money to use our, or at least renting, right? I mean, offsetting some of that subsidy. And then a new facility was built and they left. So then we invested as a city, I voted to invest all this money to improve a facility that then was going underutilized. And so I appreciate the utilization and the, the opportunity for a partnership of something to offset that cost because honestly, behind this bench, we talk a lot about subsidies. And I know there, there are members of this council that get really upset when we have an increasing subsidy or more money that's being spent and nothing's coming in. So we have to watch those budget items. So I'm saying if we have an opportunity to make money on something and to be able to work with a group so that they continue to utilize it at their benefit and make money being there, I think it's a win-win. And it sounds like Dustin wants to be able to grow their sport too.
Before we renovated, you couldn't even play pickleball on those old sport courts we have. So it's been positive all the way around. So I think the council's sort of, their support of that project. There was some controversy on it at the beginning, but it's paid off.
Yeah. And the last thing I would say, cause I did talk to Dustin about this today, um, and I, and he probably has some comments about it too, is understanding the frustration from your side of it, I totally get last minute. Carolyn, you said that you had the communication. Last minute, or even I think it's in the lease maybe for the two, two weeks notice or trying to give you as much notice as possible. Um, but I, and so I understand that frustration, especially if you're emailing your participants or texting them or anything, that would, that would get frustrating. But I also want you to understand the frustration from their side. I don't know if he's, he's mentioned that to you either, but I mean, laying out those wrestling mats. You know, if they have that type of program, I mean, Randy, you're a big sports guy. You know this. I mean, when you have to go to all of that trouble, they spend four hundred dollars just on tape. Just to be able to put that down. So I mean, being able to take that up and put that down, I mean, that's where I don't think they're ever intentionally saying, oh yeah, we're, we're displacing you and we're not gonna help you try to find a facility to practice in. I think for them, it's, they're trying not to lose money in all of this stuff when they're paying us rent as well.
And I, I just wanted to speak to that because I can understand the frustrer. I appreciate the comments. Uh, Mr. Berenzel, I, uh, we are just meeting and I'd be happy to, to see you outside and have a conversation. The majority of my conversations have been with, um, Randy and, and Carolyn who, Randy, again, I've known since I was really, really little. I think we have a good open line of communication as far as the displacement, um, issue. Understand too, I wanted to speak to that, that, that was a one-off event. I have solved that problem. Uh, running a sixty-five thousand square foot youth facility and taking on another one was too much for one person. We have since hired somebody else that is managing all scheduling, uh, as far as that is concerned. So that has been solved. Youth sports is very seasonal as well. Um, there are months where there are going to be an influx of tournaments, like the month of December. We have a lot of tournaments and we've also run a ton of teams, uh, to the Sioux City area. With that being said, months like April, um, there aren't any tournaments. It's just a downtime for youth sports. So there's gonna be some ebbs and flows. I just wanna be completely honest. Um, there may be times where on a Friday, we have to set up a wrestling mat and we can't take it down and set it back up because it does cost us four hundred dollars. I also wanna make the comment that, uh, it's, it's public knowledge, but the amount of this lease, I know what it takes to try to cash flow a youth sports facility. This won't be an easy task for us. That's a lot of money, um, for us to take on a second, second facility, just being honest. There are going to be months where we lose money on Long Lines, just so everybody is, is clear on that. That is a lot of money for us to, to do that, but the positive outweighed the negative on it. That's why we made the, the decision to move forward with, um, with our proposal. Again, we are more than willing to move forward and, and in any way possible, I don't want this to become a pickleball versus the arena. That should not be what we're doing here. Uh, I, that's kinda the, what I feel a little bit and I haven't talked to anybody but two people sitting over there. And I think that our relationship is great. Um, and that is how I walked in here. So I'm a little bit taken back by, uh, a little bit of the, 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 the atmosphere, I guess you, you could say. Mayor Scott, I understand your position. I promise you I do. I appreciate the support, um, that you give, um, as well as all the council members, but we will move forward, like I said, in a positive manner and do our best to not displace. There are just, there are months where it's inevitable. It just is. Might also add that one of those days was when we partnered with the Expo Center's large volleyball tournament that came into town. We pay for that, uh, Long Lines usage. We gave it to that entity that came in and did that for free. And we paid our janitor out of our own pockets afterwards to clean that facility. I lost money on that situation. We also gave our facility for free to that entity because we want to see those things happen in our community. So I just wanna make that a point as well. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else we've heard?
I appreciate it very much, all the comments. And I hope that there's better dialogue. It sounds like there is, but Frank, for you specifically, I hope you're able to work with, especially having you on Parks Board, I think you're an important voice for this community and obviously for this organization and group. And I hope there is better dialogue and communication moving forward, whether it's through Carolyn or otherwise. I mean, I just wanna make sure everyone's on the same page. The, the thing is that I, as a member of council, get more and more frustrated by is if individuals in our community don't talk to the people that are in charge, whether it's going to Matt Salvatore or Dustin Cooper in this case, and just going to the mayor or myself. I, I, I find that very frustrating cause I wanna make sure that we're going through the necessary channels before one of us has to try to investigate things. So I hope there's a good dialogue moving forward and I'm hopeful.
So Matt, if we, if we proceed with the thirty day notice, when would the, what's the hearing date? Did I read that? Was it April twelfth?
Yeah, April twelfth. That's correct.
That's when we would consider the, uh, the draft of the lease?
Correct. Right now it's just a very rough draft and it would be more formalized at that point.
Mr. Cooper, I wanted to ask you, did, did you have a comment about the, the hours strictly being followed? I, I think you answered it in some respects by saying overnight, you don't wanna take out the wrestling mats, put them back down. But what about that? Does that, does that give you?
I mean, I guess I'd, I would need some clarification. Yeah, we use generally like the tournament times. We start games at five. We're generally done by nine. Our, our, I was trying to respect, um, our, our times. So it's been, our janitor was coming in the next day to clean. There were some complaints about some garbage that was being left like after a Sunday tournament. And our janitor was in there cleaning, so we have since altered that. And our janitor now comes like late at night to pick that up. So it's clean, uh, for the pickleball association. There's some setup that's involved, but when we go in, there's nobody in there generally and it's just putting up a couple of tables. So yes, outside of the five to nine, there is setup and, and cleanup, I suppose. Um, other than that, I'm not exactly sure. I would need more articulation as far as.
I think our point was, what you made on the wrestling mats. We don't, you know, I understand that you don't wanna pick them up on Thursday. I need to put it back on Friday. But that impacts us because when you keep them down for Thursday, Friday.
Mike, Frank, you gotta come to the microphone. I'm sorry.
When you come down for Thursday, Thursday, Friday, Saturday and Sunday, then we lose Thursday, Friday and Monday.
And this is the first conversation that we've ever had about this situation? And I, I would have been, my door is always open. I'm at the arena almost twenty-four hours a day.
You know, we're not asking you to do anything about it. Because, you know, I understand that you don't wanna pay to have somebody take them up after every day, but to say that you only have the facility five to nine is, that's very misleading. You're, you're gonna set up and clean up and to break down outside of five to nine on weekdays.
And, and being, yes, I guess is the honest answer to that. There are going to be some setup and breakdown. I don't know how that infringes upon the pickleball association, but maybe it does.
But you know that in advance, cause you're talking, these are tournaments that you're talking about? Are these tournaments that you're talking about?
The wrestling mats? Is that what, yes. So we brought in AAU regionals to the town. Um, we run our own tournaments. We bring in national wrestling tournaments and it's an awesome wrestling facility. People love it.
But you know in advance, so.
I, I do, yes, sir.
When, when that's coming, so.
And, and all but one time, we have given the proper, um, we have followed protocol. And I don't, I can't remember what that one time was, but once again, my fault, my bad. We have tried to resolve that by hiring a person that's only responsible for that. I think there are going to be mistakes that are made even moving forward from here, but we are committed again to working together.
Well, it, it sounds like to Alex Waters' point, it sounds like if, you know, you got thirty days to, to discuss that to, and come back in thirty days and say, we're at an impasse or no, we can agree to this or what, but it sounds like that will help immensely.
Yep.
To have, have you both sit down and talk about it. And it's not only.
We knew what we, we were having there during the day here too, but you know, when, when we see this agreement there, we didn't know, are we gonna still be able to have these mornings?
Exactly.
As we go forward.
No, but Randy, you and I talked. We had a, I called you and I told you that.
Yeah, but we, we didn't, you know, but that's what we just, we just see this agreement there and, and we, you know, if we know what we have, are we gonna be the same? I, you know, that, that's why, like I said.
And I under- I understand those, that's why I called you and explained that that was not going to affect you and.
Well, it wasn't gonna affect till, uh, till the end of the year, but I didn't, you know, I didn't know, I've done a three-year lease or how long a lease this was or whatever was going forward.
But that's what can be discussed now.
And that's fine, you, you know, we're okay. Like I said, our biggest challenge and, and help us wherever we can. If you can help us find places to play for our, you know, for the, the people that we are trying to, and, and it's not just pickleball. I mean, if, if it's volleyball, adult volleyball or adult basketball, we're, we're focusing on this. I'm just talking, uh, adult sports, you know, adult recreation, family recreation, you know? I'm gonna go, you know, this summer, and I've even talked to Angel, you know, I'm doing free lessons. It's gonna be in, in the brochure through the, you know, through the Pickleball Association. Go to new family nights. You know, believe me, you know, we, we went this as a quality of life. It's all about revenue then, you know.
Well, no, no.
Service, you know, I, I, it, it, it's not that we're bringing in terms of revenue, blah, 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 you know. We're about quality of life is what we're trying to get in there. Help us be able to, to, to find some places to, to play.
Well, the school district is a natural, and I've argued that for a hundred years around this community. Their, their grounds are so sacred that they don't wanna open them up to the public, but they have the best facilities in town to do what you wanna do that only get used about one night a week.
Have they told you no?
It's stupid that they don't, the school district.
Yes.
Have they turned you down?
Uh.
You, they can't afford it, nor can you. That's the problem.
Well, and that's it. And that's what I said, you know, but I know it affected a substance in the thing, but I'm just telling you that, you know, that's what.
Well, but they can't talk about quality of life on one side and not help us on the other.
Well, I was gonna say.
We're, we're all world for.
Well, and I would say, Randy, yeah, I would go to a school board meeting and bring your same and passion to people and have that conversation with them because gosh, as a member of this city council, I thought we were making decisions that were really helping pickleball. I mean, I, cause that's my thing is I'm sitting here kinda feeling like Dustin is that.
Their city attorneys told them, or their school attorneys told them they have to get equal rent.
Uh, we have people that, you know, that, that.
Am I right?
That they look for places to play. You know, and we have people, you know, we have a playtime schedule. They, they look for places to play. And I even had somebody there the other day, uh, Sunday morning. They're looking to move in, into the area and, and stop in, you know, and, uh, uh, learn to know where, where you can play pickleball.
Yeah.
Not gonna move here, you know, for some of that. I, you know, in the, the riverfront. I, I just think that people are gonna stop there and they're gonna see.
I tried. I lost that one, Randy. I tried the other day, Randy, and I lost that one. I tried to get the basketball courts out and pickleball in and I lost the vote, so.
They'll be, they can be multi-purpose.
You're, you're missing the people that are traveling. We're talking about people traveling, coming through to use that facility. They're not, they're not gonna travel through and use, use basketball, but they're, I guarantee they're gonna use our pickleball.
I tried.
Randy, it's all, it's all about balance, my friend, cause people wanna play basketball, people wanna play pickleball. And that was my point. Is, I've said it before and I don't wanna bela- I don't wanna bela- I don't wanna.
Impact and, and we're thinking of revenue. They're gonna stop and, and, you know, stay in hotels and that, uh, stay in Sioux City on the riverfront right there.
No, Randy, what I was gonna say is, I don't wanna belabor the point, but I think that this council, at least me in particular, I, I'll speak for myself. Well, and I don't think Julie was on when we voted for some of these things. But I would tell you, I thought that we've done really well by the pickleball courts and trying to really be flexible. And with this process too, I mean, I, it sounds to me like Dustin Cooper has nothing but the purest intentions. And to Councilman Moore's point, he said that look, if sixty days no, was it sixty or thirty or whatever days noticed? If it's absolutely horrible, Dustin is the worst partner we've ever hired in the city. Oh my gosh, why would you ever do that? You come to us and make an impassioned plea like this and we'll say, yeah, I guess we gotta look at it. I, I don't know what else we could do. We have a, a person that wants to expand sports has proven that he can do it. You know what I mean? And, and to have you guys be able to have all of those mornings free and then really try to expand those efforts, I, as a council member, thought we were doing right by you, but it really feels like we haven't done enough.
Well, there, there's more work to be done and I, I'm convinced and I have hoped that, um, the reasonable minds will come together within thirty days and we'll have, we'll have a good package to deliver, really. There, I, I just, I think that's gonna be the trend. Thank you again for being here today. Thanks.
All the questions.
Now, this is gonna be the vote that we publish the notice, start the thirty day period running.
Flashing abstain, but I have no idea.
Lisa?
Mine's flashing abstain. We're just voting to, for the.
For the hearing.
You can change your vote. You can change your vote.
The hearing of thirty days.
I haven't voted yet, Pete. Go ahead. As long as you haven't voted, you can change it and hit whatever button you wanna.
Okay. But we're just moving this to next month.
Yeah, to the hearing.
No, we're gonna publish the notice, Pete.
Yeah, it's thirty days.
Yeah, thirty days. That'll be a month from now.
April twelfth.
Four to one, I, I vote no. Again, it's not about the arena. I think their quality deal, it's about the process around here, so.
With that, we'll go to citizen concerns. Are there any citizens to be heard? Seeing none, we'll go to council concerns. Mr. Gretkin.
No, sir. Thank you.
Julie.
No concerns today, sir.
Alex.
Well, you're not going to get away with that easily.
I know, I wouldn't. I.
All right. I would say, um.
Here, I knew that.
Exactly. It's International Women's Day. Um, I just wanted to say and recognize, um, the directors, the department directors that we have in this organization that are women leading the charge. I think that that's something that we should be proud of, um, and excited about. I'm, I'm honored to serve right up here next to, um, a woman that's been leading this charge and doing well by the city. So I appreciate that very much. But just wanted to, um, recognize that. Um, I would also just echo some frustrations. I know that, um, I talked with Mr. Salvatore about it as well as other members, um, from the home show. Uh, I thought that that was, there was great attendance and enthusiasm and excitement about an event like that. I was deeply troubled, um, and concerned and frustrated that I would say a, a majority of the vendors, uh, refused to follow our, our city guidance, which was really frustrating, um, to me as a member of council, but I understand that, that people are experiencing COVID fatigue and they, they say, well, I'm vaccinated, so I don't have to take care of anyone else or, you know, or, oh, I, I don't want to recognize this. But we, we live to fight another day and try to take care of our citizens. So.
I had a doctor in today and he said, and they're in a, he's a fairly large-sized practice. And he said the flu, the flu is down, almost immeasurable down because he's convinced it's because people were wearing masks and socially distancing. The flu is almost nonexistent this year.
And, and colds, I think.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm.
I don't know why we can't, you know, he said when they, when they had an epidemic in Japan years ago, people continued to wear the mask and they suffer lesser than the flu and colds than we do.
Well, because there's a strong pull out in media sources that say, you know, otherwise. And there's a few that say otherwise and it just draws people to it because it's controversy, I think.
Yeah.
But, I mean, our physicians wear masks and gloves and protective gear.
All day.
For medical treatments, for surgeries, for all kinds of things. And I just, I analogize it by saying, would you feel comfortable if your physician was operating on you without gloves and a mask and protective gear? I mean, the same thing. It stops spreading of anything, reduces it.
I am curious, uh, Mr. City Manager, um, I saw your email on, was it Saturday morning? Maybe when the discussion about not wearing masks down at the home show. And, and I think you indicated that the city didn't have any authority because it was the Expo, uh, Board. Were they in agreement or did they not have an opinion?
No, I believe they did. Um, our policy has been, the Expo Center is owned by the Expo Center Board. However, our Parks and Recreation Department manages the facility.
Yes.
So we were applying the mask mandate under the authority that the city is managing the facility. Um.
And it doesn't even exist if we don't make the lease payment. So who, who are we kidding?
Yeah.
Okay.
But on top of that, on top of that, the, the, uh, home show was in coordination with Spectra. Spectra later on that evening put staff on the floor, walking around, encouraging mask use, handing out masks wherever possible. But ultimately, I think, as Julie said, there are people that just downright refuse to do it.
Well, and I understand people that go there, you know, that oppose it and are going to fight us on the process. I, the majority, the overwhelming majority of my frustration was the vendors.
Right.
I would say, I would say 75% of the vendors were not wearing masks. And I went on Sunday. I don't, I talked to Matt and he said Saturday, or Friday, Saturday was better, um, was much better. But I went on Sunday and was, I, I was so discouraged, I had to leave because I was very angry. That's all I have, Mayor.
Okay, Mr. Moore. The Inclusive Sioux City Committee will be meeting tomorrow at 12:15. They'll be taking up topics that are near and dear to everybody's heart. So I just wanted to let you know that we are having another meeting tomorrow and I'll let you know and keep giving you progress reports if things happen. I move we adjourned. Second.
Moore?
Aye.
Tanner?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
Waters?
Aye.
Gretkin?
Aye.
Hey, Ann. Appreciate your work on the inclusive one man and letting us know.